Good evening. It is five o'clock officially, and I will call the meeting to order. It looks like we've got a lot of good conversations going out there in fellowship, but we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the February 1st, 2024 Smyrna Municipal Planning Commission Meeting. You know what? Tonight, I'm gonna do the prayer, and I'll let Tim do the pledge. So you guys are gonna have the Tim and Tim tonight as far as that. So if you'll stand with me and bow. Father in heaven, thank you for today. Thank you for our town and all the blessings that you have given us here in Smyrna. Be with our police officers, our firefighters, our first responders. We pray that you continue to put a hedge of protection over them. We ask that you bless all of our employees. Please be with our military, our servicemen and women, their families, especially with all that's going on in the world today. Be with us tonight, grant us wisdom and sound judgment, for it's in your name we pray. Amen. Just face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Tim. Okay, our next item is citizens' comments.
There's none at this time.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the next item, which is approval of the minutes of the January 4th, 2024 meeting. Counselor, are the meeting minutes in order?
The order is to form, Chairman.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the commission? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
To approve the minutes.
I have a motion to approve the minutes. So I have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All of those in favor of approving the January 4th, 2024 meeting minutes signify by saying aye. Opposed, the minutes are approved. All business. Our first item under site plans is the addition to the villages of Valley Greens, Section 4, Enan Springs Road West and Wildwood Drive, owner, developer, JSD Holdings.
I believe this is a site plan that was originally brought before you in October last year, so a couple of different iterations had been brought to you in the past, and this is what they're presenting tonight. It is a 47 apartment, 13 town home, 5,250 square foot commercial space development. All of that is part of the PUD, and it has been approved as part of this PUD back in 2004. Ingress and egress are shown on both Wildwood Drive and Enan Springs Road. The townhomes will be for sale, and the plan will need to be submitted and recorded for a horizontal property regime prior to issuance of any permits. And the two-story townhome units and three-story apartment buildings are part of this development. Square footage of the area for the site, 1.54 acres, and that does require 6,710 square feet of landscaping. Applicant is showing for 7,500 square feet. Total park required of 180 spaces, and they're showing for 203. Handicap does require six spaces, and they're showing for those six spaces as well. The landscape plan shows a Type C landscape buffer along the northern property line abutting the two single-family lots. Streetscape is shown along Enan Springs Road West with a variety of trees lining Wildwood Drive between driveways of the townhomes. Additional vegetation is shown behind the apartment buildings, shown between, behind apartment building two to buffer the residential buildings from the commercial development. A Type C landscape buffer is also shown along the eastern property line abutting the single-family lots. However, additional vegetation will be required to create the buffer from the high-density residential to the single-family residential. Design review, so since the comments went out last week, we have received updated plans that have been improved quite a bit from what you have before you tonight as far as the report is concerned. As part of that update is design review, so architectural elevations submitted show the commercial building on the front and rear to have a mixture of primer materials, which do include brick and glass glazing. The side elevations are consistent with the front and rear, so the, all the primary materials do carry over to the sides of the building. The townhome elevation submitted show the front elevations with a mixture of bricks, stone, and fiber cement board siding. The rear is entirely glass and hardy board siding on those townhomes. The apartment elevations provided via examples of four different wall faces for the apartment buildings do show a mixture of brick, hardy board siding, and glass for windows. So as presented, all of those materials do meet designer review requirements, so staff is satisfied with the way the elevations have been submitted and presented to you tonight. Senior comments, one through five, all remain at this time, and then we have a couple of staff comments to go over. So staff comments, one and two of our utility comments with fire flow for the site. Comment three regarding the subdivision plat for the easement to be dedicated for the utilities, and we would ask that it also be updated. So being the townhomes are for sale units, it does change the way the sewer is serviced. We need a sewer line to be provided behind the townhome units. So that was something that was different from this iteration plan. We need that to be updated, showing an easement surrounding that sewer main. So comment three remains at this time. Comment four is asking about whether the townhomes will be for sale products or rental, and that kind of ties into the previous comment about the sewer main. That has been addressed at this time. Comment five, the landscape along Enan Springs Road West will be required to comply with MTE MC overhead utility requirements. We do ask that the applicant substitute the street trees along Enan Springs Road for a flame of more maple and shrubs along Enan Springs, along Wildwood Drive as well. Milton has the electric allows certain variety of trees within their easements, of what the trees that they do allow, and then would be consistent along with the streetscape requirements. We decide that the flame maple is something that would meet both the requirements to satisfaction, so we ask that the applicant substitute those trees out. Comment six is a public works comment. They ask that the landscape and storm structures not overlap, so that's gonna be a holdover comment. We're gonna wait for Public Works to have a chance to take a look at the plans, make sure that they're satisfied with it as well. Comment seven was regarding the distance around the buildings that the fire department needs to reach, and that was 150 feet, and that has been met and can be removed. Comment eight, the sidewalk to the playground area next to building three must have a crosswalk to make it ADA accessible. So if they didn't have a ramp previously, we just need them to add a crosswalk across the drive aisles to make it ADA compliant. Comment number nine, we ask them to label the internal drive with road names, have done that and can be removed. Number 10, apartment buildings one, two, and three sewer cleanouts need to be located no further than 10 feet away from the sewer main. They have done that, can be removed. Comment number 11, the new water main must be connected to 12-inch main on the west side of Enan Springs Road West. The roadway must be bored. A connection cannot be made on the east side of Enan Springs Road nor Wildwood Drive due to the pressure that is required for the commercial part of the development. So they're required per the utilities department to tap in on the opposite side of Enan Springs Road for this. Comment number 12, sewer main is required to be extended to the gamble property to the north. There are two single-family lots up there, so it just needs to be extended along those property lines. Comments 13, regarding the architectural elevations, that has been addressed, can be removed. Comment 14 is in those same lines for these elevations, and that can also be removed. Comment number 15, we ask them to provide an additional dumpster for the development, specifically for the commercial development on the commercial buildings to have their own separate trash waste areas, separate from the residential areas. They have added a polycard area for the commercial area, so staff believes it's sort of halfway meeting what we deem acceptable, whether it's up to you, whether you would like to see a physical dumpster location for the commercial building, or you're fine with this polycard area. So comment number 15 is gonna remain at this time. 16 and 17 are both fire department comments that have been addressed and can be removed. 18, loading unloading zone for the fire department cannot interfere with their auto turn. That has been addressed, can be removed. Number 19, we ask them to provide a Type C landscape buffer between the medium, between the multifamily uses and the surrounding single-family uses. They have done that for the most part behind the apartment building along that property line. However, you would ask that they extend that between the townhomes and the single-family development. So just extended about probably 60 more feet, and then that satisfies that requirement. 20 is regarding additional vegetation between the apartment building and the commercial building. They have done that, can be removed. 21, the parking calculations in their site data table are just slightly off from what's actually on the plan, so that comment will remain. And then 22, the site is required to meet ADA requirements, and we ask that they shift a couple of handicap parking spaces around the development so that you don't have handicap people traversing across drive aisles to get to their intended destination. So number 22 is gonna remain at this time. So I'll roll through the comments again. We have comments one, two, three, five, six, eight, 11, 12, 15, 19, 21, and 22. That all remain. For the most part, a lot of those comments are easy to address and fix, and staff feels comfortable with those comments that are remaining. They're something that can be done by the applicant. We've been in discussion with the applicant today and this week at least to kind of come to a conclusion, reduce the number of comments in this list, and they have done quite a bit to satisfy staff comments, and staff believes at this time, this is now something that can be met and addressed at a staff level if you choose to approve this plan. Utility is in the middle of working on comments to send back to the applicant as well as part of their review process, so with that, staff would recommend approval with those comments.
Okay. Questions for Mitchell concerning this? Go ahead, Charles.
I guess I have a couple of questions on the eastern buffer. And I'm just curious as to, and this may be more of a developer question, but why that is configured as apartments rather than townhouses or something less intense as it butts up on the single family?
So the way we view townhouses and apartments, I know they're not the same thing, they're both multifamily, the way we look at it. The way the PUD was approved back in 2004 did allow for 60 residential components to it. The last iteration that we did receive from the applicant showed, I believe, townhomes as part of it for the entire development, wasn't able to meet the parking requirement, so they went back and revised it. And this is a way that with footprint of these apartment buildings, something that they are able to meet our parking requirement per the ordinance. So the applicant may be able to speak to that better, but that's my best interpretation of it.
So is building number one a two-story or a three-story?
They're all three-story.
I would think that the line of sight of a three-story building would be fairly dramatic on those single-family units. You know, just in terms of height and elevation and line of sight.
When this was approved, again, was this 2003, 2004? So to Charles's point, was the approval at that point a two-story or three-story, or was it defined?
I don't believe we ever specified what was.
It wasn't defined. It was just 60 multifamily units, the square footage of commercial that they have shown is really all.
Is there any prohibition against a two-story or three-story in Smyrna?
There's no, yeah, there's no prohibition as far as the height other than, you know, just our normal height limitations, but they're well within.
I understand where you're coming from. I kind of feel like we're bound to a good extent to this 2004 approval. Is that?
And that's basically what we looked at originally back in October when we looked at this. There's only so much we can do with this since what was approved, and this is, the applicant is presenting those what was approved essentially.
Right.
Within those regulations.
Can you define, and I wasn't sure I was understanding the terminology as far as the dumpster versus, we're calling it some type of cart?
Polycard.
Polycard. Explain that to me.
I did not Google it before I came in here, but I believe a polycard is a, it's just a smaller area.
This is more of a residential-type trash receptacle, trash can type deal.
For a commercial building.
Which is okay if it's a, if the use doesn't generate a lot of trash, you know? If it's a, some sort of small office building or some office use or something like that, a restaurant or something, obviously that's not gonna be sufficient.
Is there an area, if the commission were inclined to require a dumpster, is there enough area without losing parking to go below parking regs that this could be accomplished? Or is there an area on this?
They have more parking than what is required, so yes, to answer the question, they could lose a couple of parking spots or something. If that's what ended up having to happen, it'd still be okay. And to have an area on the side of the building, I don't know how, it wouldn't work, it may not work from a truck, a truck being able to really get in and out of it very usually, but there is an area on the side of the building. It'd be a large enough area that you'd have to figure out a way for the truck to actually maneuver to get to it, to empty it.
What is staff's position on this?
I mean, again, we're okay with the site plan. I think we need to.
As far as the dumpster?
As far as this dumpster. I mean, we're okay with maybe a condition, depending on the uses in the future, commercial building, a dumpster may be required, and similar to what we've had in the past where we've had what we felt like maybe not adequate numbers of dumpsters for sizes of buildings that they, if something ever comes up in the future, that they would have to figure out a dumpster enclosure, build a dumpster enclosure and put one in.
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking back to Mike last week when we had a commercial development, and we had three, knowing that there could be the possibility of really needing four, and I'm trying to remember, it's been a month, but we were talking about where they were located as well, or at least adding additional, because there were five units within the building.
And we knew at least two of those are mainly restaurants too in that particular. We don't have any idea what the uses here, this is kind of a speculative. It's a future, a long-term phase of this development, I think. It's probably the last building that'll be built, you know? So, you know, there's, there's probably opportunities to find a spot somewhere if they needed to in the future to make it work, if they needed a dumpster or more, or maybe even two, depending on what ends up being in the building, you know? So I mean, I think we would be okay if you had that condition just modified to, you know, if dumpsters are ever necessary for the commercial building in the future, the developer is required to meet all the requirements as well as with the enclosures and all of that.
What are the apartments, what are they gonna, they're gonna have receptacles?
They've got dumpsters.
There's two dumpsters on the site.
Two dumpsters located there. We were just, if you had 47 apartments plus three commercial businesses, would that be adequate? If the commercial businesses are the types of businesses.
So they're gonna have a big truck pickup anyway?
There's gonna be a truck coming through there to pick up, yeah, there's, they've got a dumpster kind of in between buildings, kind of centrally located between the three buildings.
Right. Okay, other questions?
I just think it's gonna be harder for the city to go back after this building is built. Let's say you get a couple of food shops in there and, you know, insurance office or something like that in there, and they're are producing quite a bit of waste, more than what that receptacle's gonna hold. It's gonna be tougher, I think, on the year down the road or two years, whatever, to go back in and put that dumpster in as versus, I would like to see it in there now, because you've already got two on site, you're already gonna have a pickup, and if that one's put in there now, then it's no hardship on whoever has that property or building or even the tenant to try to get a bigger dumpster in there, especially if they got cans that are We've got some existing properties right now, the apartments, that they're stacked up outside the dumpsters. There's several here in town like that, even though, you know, that's what was built to begin with. But in this case, knowing that it's probably gonna be, that corridor's gonna continue to grow at some point in time, if it's not initially, it probably would be some kind of food service that will be in there. I would like to see the dumpster, a regular dumpster put in on the front end.
One additional?
Yes. Yeah, just for that.
You might have enough room right there in that existing dumpster area, just make it larger.
Yeah, that's what I kind of looked at.
That polycard area?
Not do away with the polycard, the dumpster area that's shown, it'd be a little bit of a hall from the commercial building, but it's not that far. Where the, where the existing dumpster pad is shown, just make it.
Extend it.
Extend it, make it a little bit bigger and, you know, have another one in there. That's, that would make the most sense. It's where the, it works from a, the truck to be able to get to it.
But the.
Even if they just don't necessarily put a dumpster in there right now.
The potential downside of that, I think, Kevin, would be the people in the apartment would be using it, the people in the building may not, it'd be full before they get their stuff in it. Does that make sense?
Well, if you've got three versus two, yeah.
I know.
That makes the most, from a location standpoint, that's what makes the most sense.
Anything else, Mike?
No.
Give us your name and.
You know, Gerald Hoss is still engineering. I'm more comfortable with, the polycarts for what the proposed uses are, I think, are adequate. I'm more comfortable with the condition that before they get a building permit for that building, they could add one. If we do add a dumpster, we would put it right behind Unit A. I mean, we would not want them to walk all the way across the parking lots. But, you know, for offices, typically those 90-gallon rolling, those are big polycarts, so the rolling party carts are, you know, are adequate, and they have private pickup, they have a truck that picks it up and dumps it. But if we have to have one, I'd put it, it'll lose a few parking spaces and put it in that polycard area, there's room to put a dumpster in there, that's where we would put it. So if you want a dumpster now, that's where we'd put it, but really rather have the condition that when we pull the building permit for that to address at that time to see what the uses are. But I'm comfortable either way, really.
Okay. Before you go, anything else for Enik on this?
But there is adequate space right there for that.
There is adequate space, but yeah, I appreciate Mitch, we've been working back and forth emailing today with all the different items, and I know utilities, I've got a markup from Mark Parker, we've addressed his water and sewer comments, but we haven't resubmitted them, because once we get planning commission approval, then we submit our utility construction plans to water and sewer, and then we submit our engineering plans to engineering for approval. So after planning commission approval, we've still gotta go through water and sewer and engineering, so we, I'm comfortable with all the comments that Mitch has had today, and we're ready to move forward, thank you.
Do, one other thing, do you know how they're gonna, are they gonna build the apartments first and the commercial last, or is it gonna be all together? Do you know?
They're gonna build the townhomes along Wildwood first.
Okay.
Try to generate a little revenue for the apartments.
Okay.
And the commercial's probably down the road.
Okay.
Just don't think there's a need today for the commercial, there's a lot of commercial out there. But five, 10 years from now, whenever things get busier, then that was when the commercial would come online, sort of the plan.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you. Anything else for staff right now?
If I may say something. We, personally, from my standpoint at least, we'll sometimes get complete shell buildings come through without even knowing still what's going in them until the day they go into them to do build outs. So I don't know how much time is available at that point, because they could, you know, we don't, the entire building may not be built out at the same time, kind of trickles in here and there. At what point, when do you introduce that dumpster at that, what point is the question really done, so?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with what Mike's talking about myself personally, and I'm just gonna speak for myself and not any of the other commissioners. Okay, anything else for Mitchell? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Make a motion to approve with adding another dumpster for building A, B, and C. That's that commercial, the commercial building, yes. Okay. Okay, I have a motion to approve with staff comments and adding the requirement for a dumpster to be added to the commercial building ABC. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion is approved with one no. Okay. We are now on to new business. The first is a rezoning request. This comes from Marion Masood, 540 Rock Springs Road. This is a PUD amendment.
Yes, this is a piece of property on Rock Springs Road. It's just under an acre, about eight tenths of an acre of property. It has a PUD zoning already. This is another PUD that has been in place for close to, it's close to 20 years, I don't know if it's quite 20 yet, but a pretty long time. This is existing or current, or shrouding zoning is a mix of R4 and the Harsh Prince Village PRD, and land use plan would support mixed residential here. Plan, or thoroughfare plan does designate Rock Springs Road as a collector. The PUD amendment, the existing PUD basically was approved, the property owners, not the current property owners, previous property owners, there was a house on the property. They requested to, we actually requested to be rezoned as C4, and at the time, our planning commission and council was not comfortable with that, and so they came back with a PUD to essentially allow for the house could be a house and remain a house, or it could become a very limited commercial building, being basically a fabric shop selling sewing supplies and offering sewing glasses. And that was all that was approved in the PUD. The PUD amendment request is basically to allow for retail sales of clothing and bedding. They did not request anything beyond that, so it would basically just add that to the list of allowed uses within the PUD. Existing, it was converted, as I said, to the commercial use the house was. So there's 12 parking spaces there already, so it is, and it's about a 16, or about a 1,400 square foot roughly building, so it is within, they got adequate parking for this use as well as the previous use, so that's not an issue. Sewer is not currently available there, it is nearby, obviously with the townhome development nearby. There is an existing septic system on the property, if it ever proved inadequate, they would have to extend sewer from Harsh Prince Village to serve it, so that's really just an if they ever need it type thing. I believe that's all that I've got.
Questions for Kevin?
Once we approve a PUD, now this is an OR, so if it's not, if it can't be a fabric as it's written.
Right.
A fabric and sewing place, it reverts back to, it can revert back to residence.
Yes, this particular PUD was approved, it could be reverted back to residence, yes, one single-family residence.
So with the way they are requesting, can it just be a mattress store the way it's written?
It's, yeah, it technically could be, I mean, it's bedding and clothing, that's not their intent.
Well, I understand, but the intent of people now.
Right, I understand, yeah.
Because the PUD goes with the building in the future?
My understanding, my understanding is it's more blankets and quilts and things like that, not mattresses, so if we want to spell it out.
But as written.
To Amy's point, bedding could be considered a mattress or box springs or headboards, footboards, just, that's bedding, right?
It could be secondhand.
Unless it specifically says linens.
Yeah, and maybe, and maybe we need to be more specific, but that, what they requested was clothing and bedding, and I think that is, that was not what they were thinking, but.
Right, and I, I feel comfortable with what. I feel comfortable with what their intent may be, but the PUD goes with the building when it's sold.
Absolutely.
And it could be, as written, it looks like to me, it could be leveled and a mattress store go right there in the middle of the homes. Or a secondhand mattress store, or bedding, I mean, it seems a little open for the future.
Can we change the bedding to linens?
Sure.
The wording on that, so it's specifically, that way it limits something else from going in there at some other, you know, mattress store or anything like that. Does it meet all the other requirements, Kevin, 'cause they're gonna have, you know, traffic in and out?
Yeah, I mean.
The sewing place had people going in, but I think they were doing classes and, you know, things like that.
They were doing classes, and they, they were selling fabric and.
Yeah.
Right.
Patterns and things like that, so it'd be, it's the same, it's very similar as far as the retail type of use, certainly this may generate a little bit more traffic.
It would generate more, because people are gonna be stopped in and out to purchase, not to take classes.
Yeah, surely the classes portion, they're not gonna have that, so it would, could generate more traffic. They've got like twelve parking spaces and where, you know, like seven would be required, so they've got, they've got, they've got plenty of.
Yeah, there's, there's a little more room on that property, they could put more in there if they wanted to.
They could, sure.
Okay, now, I may be overthinking this, but it's, it's currently approved, uh, as far as sewing and fabric, right?
Yes.
So with this, uh, with what's being, uh, presented bef- before us, is sewing supplies and sewing classes going away totally, or is that still gonna be an allowed use?
It's still been allowed use.
Okay, so it's whether or not we want to add clothing and.
It's just adding, adding a third option.
Clothing and something other, other than bedding.
Yeah.
Right.
Which to me, if, if we're narrowing it, that seems to be very consistent at that point, because I kinda shared the same concerns that, you know, from a perspective of, you know, do we end up with a mattress store, which to me starts to look more like a hard C two type, uh, exposure in this area, that was an insurance word, exposure. Uh, uh, into this, uh, versus, you know, continuing with sewing and, and fabric and linens and clothing.
And, and are, is it new clothing, or are we talking about secondhand clothing, what are you talking about?
I don't know, I don't know the details on that.
I don't know that we can.
I mean, I still don't know, I mean, I didn't know if he knew.
No, I don't know.
If there was a.
To, uh, a question I had, uh, with, you know, if we're adding clothing or, um, linens, if that were, so we're heading that, what is our, uh, what does our ordinance say as far as outdoor displays and things along those lines?
Yeah, the, the limbs, there's limitations in our zoning ordinance now already, as far as what can be displayed outside for sale, and essentially it's, it's, it's vehicles, it's, it's, uh, you know, farm equipment or lawnmower, things like that, that you would typically see outside of anything. Uh, you couldn't store, or like, you couldn't have clothing outside for sale.
Okay.
Or, or any other type of, or, you know, furniture or things like that, really.
So that's all within?
That's all within the ordinance now.
Within the, within the building itself?
Yeah, yes, yeah, it would have to be within the building.
As far as the sign, the, the sign that's currently there, does it meet our sign, 'cause it's changing hand, right?
Yeah, it meets our, the, the sign is, it's not, it beats our ordinance now, so they would, they would be within their limits.
I thought I could take it down. Okay, other questions, discussion? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, but change the word bedding to linen.
Okay, I have a motion to approve with the, uh, wait, how'd you put that, changing?
Changing the warning from bedding to.
To linen, okay, just wanna make sure I got that right, okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Our next item under rezoning is Sami Said, six zero seven zero and six zero nine two Seminary Road, rezoning R three to C two.
Yes, this is a, uh, request, there's two tracts of land, uh, that are currently zoned R, R three. Um, surrounding zoning is a mix of R one, uh, C two and I two in town, and RM in Rutherford County. Uh, land use plan would support medium density, single family residential in this area. Uh, major thoroughfare plan does, uh, designate Seminary Road and Popular Wood Road as collectors, and there's adequate right away there, uh, for those streets. Uh, this is a piece of property, or two pieces of property, rather, that, um, when this was annexed and zoned R three, uh, the owner was, was planning to, uh, take the three lots, or two lots and convert them into, uh, reset them out and create three. Uh, there is an existing, uh, structure that's, uh, a house on one of those two, and they were basically gonna create two new buildable lots. Um, that plan, he has, has moved away from that plan, and just wants to use the existing building as, convert property to commercial and use the existing building as a commercial building. Uh, we would require sewer to be extended, uh, from out, from the intersection of Ambleville and Seminary, uh, to those adjoining properties, uh, lines. Uh, intended use, uh, is for the ha, existing house we use as a dental office, um, and if this rezoning is approved, they would have to submit a site plan, meeting all of our requirements, uh, as well as they would have to work with the COs department to convert a single family residence to a commercial use, to meet, you know, ADA requirements and those type of things. That was really kind of an informational comment for them, so they're aware of that. Uh, as a commercial building, this does increase the fire, minimum fire flow, uh, it's fifteen hundred, not a thousand, so they would have to work with CUD to ensure that they have that high of a fire flow. Um, CUD at this time has only set a thousand gallons per minute, our fire department representative at our staff meeting felt like they probably can meet fifteen hundred, uh, but, but CUD hasn't actually stated that, so. Um, I guess that's all I've got.
All right, Kevin, C two.
Mm-hmm.
Could we have a convenience store here?
Yes.
Could we have a mattress store here?
Yes. Pretty much anything that you can think of, commercial outside of automotive sales or repair, can pretty much.
We can put an Arby's here.
Mm-hmm.
Or, I, I guess I should say a restaurant selling roast beef or other sandwiches, I, I, that's probably a commercial, I shouldn't have done that. So you could have pretty much anything that's allowed under C two, so.
Yes.
As it's, before us right now, and with an intent to be a, a dentist office, it doesn't have to be a dentist office as, if it's approved as C two.
If it's approved as C two, anything that's allowed in C two could be allowed, yes, they could take out the existing structure and build something, they could, use the existing structure for something that's allowed in C two that's not a dental office, you know.
Yeah.
Does a dental office have to be C two?
No.
No.
It could be a C four use, really dental office, really any of our commercial uses, C four was probably the most, C four or one of our P, professional office, P and O districts.
Or a PUD.
Or, or, yeah, you could do a PUD, but.
I, I guess, you know, my concern when I looked at this was when, uh, the C two lot that's on Ambleville Road, when that was rezoned, you know, we went from an industrial to a commercial usage there, and to me, that was a, a down zoning so that we didn't have, you know, the same type of traffic that's typically, uh, that you see with an industrial type use. But here, we are off of Ambleville Road, we are directly in front of homes, and I think we've been consistent that as we began to see a business develop, um, uh, you know, adjacent to residential, that if it's appropriate, we do look to a C four, or certainly a P and O, or, uh, even a PUD, you know, uh, in this case. And, I mean, the, the intentions may be very well that it's gonna be a, a dentist office, but sometimes things just don't happen for good reasons, and that's what, that's my concern with this.
Kevin, that corner lot is the only lot in that center that's actually in the city, correct? When it was annexed in?
On, on the north side of Paclewood, yes, sir.
Yep.
Those two lots.
Everything, the, the Foxland Forest, is that in the city or is that county?
Yes, yeah, all that area that's, that's kinda highlighted in yellow.
But everything behind that is, the darker is county, even the I two, right?
No, the I two is in the city, the I, the, kinda that.
The recycling place is in the city?
Recycling place is in the city, and there, and there's a track north of that also, that's still a residence, that's actually zoned I two. Uh, the area where the church is, and all that area west of, of, uh, Paclewood is, was all annexed when, uh, St. or Three Gospel was, was annexed and been built. So it's been there for several years now.
Other questions for, uh, Kevin?
Uh, as a matter of form, if we wanted to go to C four instead of C two, would that be a denial and a resubmission, or could we substitute C four for C two?
I'll make sure they're okay. Yeah, we probably, we typically, if the applicant is here, I don't know if the applicant is here or not, if he is here, so might ask the applicant, I think probably, if they're okay with that, probably just go ahead and recommend C four would be okay, I think otherwise, I think it'd probably be better to do the denial on resubmission, resubmit it. If they are here, if you wanna ask them that question.
Mr. Said?
C four would keep it office use only.
Well, it's not, it would be, it would be offices, you, you can have retail in a C four, but it's more limited, you couldn't have the fast food restaurants and the gas stations and things like that.
Okay.
It'd be more similar like.
I'm fine with a C four.
You're fine with a C four?
Yes, no problem.
Thank you. Okay. So you would have, well, I guess, Jeff, is that considered a request by the applicant to change the zoning from a C two, C four, so we're okay?
I think he's okay if you want, he probably would still prefer C two, I would assume, but he just thinks he's, he's.
Well, you know, I, I'm sure you can understand our concerns here.
Sure, I do.
We do have a, a neighborhood right here, and we wanna make sure that we, you know, protect the neighbors as much as possible, and I, I do believe that, you know, you want to do it as a, a dental office, but you know, in a year or two, you know, maybe the dentist decides to relocate, and it's just wide or open for some, for some things that I, I don't think would be appropriate, you know, next to a neighborhood.
Sure, sure, no problem, right, thank you.
So the applicant has amended and is now requesting a C four for this location. Anything further for Mr. Said?
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Any, uh, any additional discussion here? I will entertain a motion then.
One thing, with C four, Kevin, they'll still have to meet all these requirements, right?
Oh, yeah, that does.
For sewer, for parking, for ADA compliance, everything else stays, stays with it.
The site plan, all those things, yes, all those, regardless of the zoning, they would have to meet those requirements.
Something like this, how many parking places would be required, and it'd have to be paved, I'm sure, so.
Dental, it's basically one space per three hundred square feet of building.
What size of buildings under, now is it eighteen hundred, two thousand square feet?
It's, yeah, that's something like that.
It's a pretty good size home.
It's, yeah, it's in that ballpark, I really don't know for sure, though, yeah.
I, I guess my other concern, is there enough space there within?
Well, they, with the, I mean, he may end up, we have to look at that with the site plan, it may end up being, some of the parking ends up being on the side closer to Paclewood or something like that, 'cause it's, it's two tracks, he owns both tracks.
Right.
So.
I think the parking would probably be in the second track.
Yeah, combine the tracks together and make it work that way.
Something we would address at, at site, correct?
We would look at the site plan.
Okay. Okay, you think that's Mike?
No.
Thank you. You're welcome.
I have a motion.
Okay, Tim?
Because, uh, honestly, and, and I appreciate the applicant being willing to make a change, but honestly, it feels like, to me, it just feels like we're kinda rushing into a change, and we also may be rushing the applicant into a change. So what I'd like to do, to give us a little time and make sure this is done correctly, is I'd like to make a motion for denial, um, with the intent of that being able to come back at some point.
Okay.
As something different.
Okay.
Is it better a denial or defer?
Well, fair question.
That's the maker of the motion, if you, if you don't want them to have to reapply, then you do deferment if, uh, 'cause it starts all, all the way in the beginning, so.
Well, with that.
If you'd like to defer, then that.
With that being said, I'd like to do, I'd make a motion to defer for one month.
Okay, I have a motion to defer for one month, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, and further discussion. All those in favor of deferring this for one month signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this, this motion is deferred. Okay, now we're on to sketch plans, our first one is Hidden Hills, section six, phase two, Summerlin Road, Tamlin Avenue and Shetland Drive, owner developer, M. Non Schrodman, Near Homes, Inc.
Yes, this is a, a sketch flat, it's for, uh, one parcel of land totaling about twenty-two and a half acres, uh, zoned R three, uh, proposal is for forty-nine lots, uh, and within the sketch flat. Um, we had a few comments, most of which were, were standard type comments, uh, one through four, uh, there's no roads really on the major thoroughfare plan here, uh, that are affected with this. Um, essentially would be an extension, there's two roads, existing roads that would be extended, uh, Summerlin Road and, uh, Shetland Drive would be extended into the development. Uh, Tamlin Avenue is shown, is already existing and on, and as part of the, uh, earlier section of Hidden Hills. Um, it does not abut this particular phase, there's a piece of property in between, um, and then it also is shown, uh, in the Sims Ridge Development, and so, and connecting eventually over to, um, Spring Hill Drive and Hundred Point. So, um, it would be a, a future connection there as well, long term. Um, the only real comment, there's two comments left, uh, really, but one has been addressed. One, it would still need to remain regarding the minimum fire flow, that's, nothing's changing there. Uh, that fire flow can't be met, uh, above elevation seven twenty, so any finished fire elevation above seven twenty will require the house to be constructed with a fire sprinkler system. Um, and if that, the gross square footage of the home does exceed thirty-six hundred square feet under roof, that would increase even more as far as what the minimum would be, so, um, there's a few lots, it's primarily on that cul-de-sac area at the end of Shetland Drive. Uh, there are some lots in that area that is, most likely gonna be above elevation seven twenty, um, so that's, that's something we don't always see, but that is, that is the case in, in this area, so.
Will those also be critical lots?
Um, we, there were, several of these lots are probably gonna be critical lots, yeah, a couple of lots that have potential areas of sinkholes, and there's no flood plain, obviously is up at the top of the hill, but, uh, with the slopes that are in there, there's several of these lots will be critical lots, and so they, those may end up being critical lots as well.
Okay.
Um, the, uh, comment number seven can be removed, there were some easements shown that were not necessary, uh, along the front edge of all the lots, and so they've taken care of that, so we can remove comment number seven. So with those remaining six comments, staff would recommend approval.
Questions or comments?
Kevin, you said that, is it Tamlin that would stay open, I see Shetland's gonna be another cul-de-sac stop.
Yes, yeah, Shetland would, would be cul-de-sac, the, uh, Tamlin could be, would be open on either end, again, it's planned to extend into the Sims Ridge Development.
Okay.
And then into this future phase, there is another, not a future phase, there's a, a vacant tract of land between this property and the existing, uh, portion of Tamlin Avenue. I actually had a real estate agent contact me, I think it was yesterday, about that property, so, I mean, I think it, there's potential for that to be developed as well, uh, in a very similar manner to what this is, it's gonna be a tough piece of property to develop because of the topography, but they are looking to develop it as well, so. But, yeah, so you would connect into the existing part of Hidden Hills and back over to, uh, St. Francis and that area.
That, that extension from that point out, that property the gentleman was talking about, is. That, that extension from that point out, that property the gentleman was talking about, is that above the seven twenty as well?
Some of it is, yeah.
Okay, cool, okay.
Kind of similar, there's another, part of the reason Shetland can't connect is because there's some of the topo in there and it makes it pretty difficult to connect it. Which would be some in that same area.
I'd say the way that topography is, some of that would probably just have to stay green space. At some, you know, some point in time.
Yeah, because I was looking at Shetland, you're up seven thirty, seven thirty-two.
Yeah.
It's a pretty big ridge here.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve with staff comments.
A motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion. All those in favor of approving this sketch flat, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. Our next item, Linwood, Ammable Road, Independent Hill Road, owner developer, Gray Pack, that's been.
It's been requested to be deferred, so.
Okay, so we need to take action on that then. So we have, our next item under sketch plat, item two, Linwood, they've asked for this to be deferred.
Yes, for, they, they specifically said one month, so I did.
Okay, they've asked for a one month deferral. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve for one month.
Okay, I have a motion.
Defer for one month.
I have a motion to approve the deferral for one month. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of deferring this agenda item for one month, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This is deferred. We are now on to preliminary plats, the courtyard at Stewart's Creek, phase two, ninety-three fifty-one. Owner developer, Blakeney Partners, G P, and we also have a deferral request here.
We have a request for this one to be deferred one month as well. There's some changes that they're, that they're looking to make with this overall development that may end up, essentially, it may end up having to have some sort of a putt amendment because they're looking at some, some fairly significant changes. So they did request a one month deferral in this. I just received the revised plan today, so I'm going to dig into that more to know if they need to do all that or not. But anyway, it would be best if they just deferred just one month.
Tim, do you have this one?
Motion to defer for one month, please.
I have a motion to defer for one month from Tim. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to defer for one month. All in favor of this deferral, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been deferred for one month. We are now on to final plats. Our first item is Burnett Ridge, section one, Fortitude Trail. Owner developer, David Patterson, Trace Construction Incorporated.
This is, uh, the next two plats are both Burnett Ridge, this is section one, it's nine point eight acres, thirty-three lots. We have several comments, many of which were standard comments, really one through four would all need to remain, just the standard comments. Again, no roads that are on the major thoroughfare plan are affected with this development. Required minimum fire flow is a thousand gallons per minute, twenty P S I. And so those are all kind of all standard type comments. We'll need to keep number seven regarding adding owner's signature prior to submitting for recording. Comment number eight regarding the additional required setback along the side plot lines for, for both to have easements. That has been addressed and can be removed. Comment number nine regarding adding the utility easement for the sewer line across open space, lot one thousand three. That has been addressed and can be removed. Comment number ten has been addressed with recording, one of their notes had referenced the City of Franklin standards. And so we asked them to use Town of Smyrna standards, so it's fixed that, so that can be removed. Comment number eleven to show the total acres within this section, that has been addressed and is now shown, so it can be removed. Number twelve, show the size of the proposed water lines along Fortitude Trail and Garville Avenue, that has been addressed on Fortitude Trail. It is not shown on Garville Avenue, it appears, it's, that still needs to be fixed there. We asked them to show the dimension of the proposed right of all the cul-de-sacs, which is a hundred foot diameter, fifty foot radius. So that still needs to be shown, and so we need to keep that one. Comment fourteen was really an informational comment that the, the site plan for that amenity center will be required prior to construction of those amenities. And so that'll need to remain. And then the FEMA map information, they still have the two thousand seven date on that, and that's been, that has been updated as of twenty, May of twenty twenty-three, so they need to paint that as well. Map number has changed very slightly. The number hasn't changed, but the, the suffix at the end has changed from H to J. So they'll need to be correct on the map, so that, that would need to change. So we can remove eight, nine, and ten, and eleven, and twelve slightly changed, but with those comments, staff would recommend approval.
And this is consistent with what we saw at preliminary?
It's consistent with the preliminary plat as well, so the P R D, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, questions for Kevin on this? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this final plat, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Plat is approved. Our next is Burnett Ridge, section two, Seneca Court, owner developer, David Patterson, Trace Construction, Inc.
Yeah, this is just phase two, the Burnett Ridge, it's thirteen point two four acres, it's thirty-seven lots. Again, very similar standard comments, one through six, same as what we had before. And then number seven would need to remain regarding the owner's signature. Comment number eight has been addressed regarding the drainage easement has been, is now, it's relocated actually and showing it twenty foot fifth, so. So that one has been addressed. Number nine, show a twenty foot easement for the water line on lot sixty-one, that's been addressed and can be removed. Number ten is regarding the drainage easement along the river properties. They, public works have mentioned lots sixty-three to sixty-eight, the easement has been added, but it stops at lot sixty-seven, so they need to review that. So I want to keep that just so they can review it to be sure everything's okay there. Number eleven, there were a couple of critical lots identified on the preliminary, and we asked them to show that, and that has been done. Number twelve, we asked, look at some of the hydrants, moving some hydrants around. And basically taking care of some of that, but there, there's still, but essentially there's a hydrant indicated, but it's not actually, or there's a label, but there's not an actual hydrant shown at the southern end of Seneca Court, and that really needs to be added. And if that is added, that takes care of covering every, all the areas with adequate hydrants. Number thirteen can be removed regarding that drainage easement, as well as fourteen, those issues have been addressed and answered. Number fifteen has been addressed and can be removed regarding the certificate of approval for public ways. Number sixteen got taken care of because they moved the water line, so, or actually moved the stormpipe rather, so that can be taken off. Again, the same correction on the note ten, with regards to the incorrect municipalities been addressed. Comment number eighteen regarding total acreage has been shown. And then comments nineteen and twenty, similar to phase one regarding the right of way of the cul-de-sacs and the FEMA map information needs to be updated, so those will need to stay. So we can remove eight, nine, eleven, thirteen through eighteen, can all be removed. And then the remaining comments that are remaining, with those comments, staff would recommend approval.
Okay, questions for Kevin on this?
Again, basically what they had in the preliminary.
Yeah, patches the preliminary plat and the P R D.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
A motion to approve with staff comments from Amy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving this final plat, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. We are now on to Newberry, lots one and two, thirty-five, ten, Ammable Road. Owner developer, Larry D. Davis, Senior, Heidi Kilimanjaro Davis, Newberry Property, L L C.
Yeah, this is two lots, thirty-seven acres, it's the Newberry here, our putt, it's on Ammable Road. Typically, two lot subdivisions are able to be something that staff can review, however, this one is being developed utilizing, at least maybe on a temporary basis, but it's still being developed currently with utilizing septic systems, and so it is required to come to the planning commission as well as council. Comment number one and two would need to remain, those are relatively standard comments regarding signatures and the, and the, just their informational comment regarding the, because of the septic systems. We did ask them to remove, they had a certificate of approval for utility systems, we'd ask them to remove that as there's, there are no smart utilities on this plat. As it is, as, with this plat until they develop the subdivision, there will be in the future, but not now. We need to keep, comment number four, they are shown land being dedicated as right of way to T dot. That's something that they are doing, wasn't something staff asked them to do, but they're doing that. So we just need something from T dot that they're going to accept that, or it'll end up being just town right of way. But, so we need to clarify that still. Comment number five, there's some existing buildings shown on the, the land that is remaining. We just asked them if they were utilizing the septic system at all on lot one, they are actually going to remove those buildings, so that negates any need for that comment. And then six and seven are comments from, from C U D, and so we would need to keep six and seven. So we can remove three and five, and with those comments, staff would recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments from Amy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Charles. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This final plat is approved. We are now on to site plans. Our first item is three twenty-three Lake Farm Road. Owner developer, Jason R. Lloyd.
This is one that's actually, they have another one, they had a request that it be deferred, and their request was for indefinite deferral. So I don't know if that changes anything we need to do, Jeff, or not, but that was what they requested, so.
I think it'd be cleaner, I mean, if you want to give them two months, three months, I don't really care for indefinite referral, because I don't want it there to be told something.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Tim?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, did you have a question?
No, I was saying two months.
Okay, is that?
Is that acceptable for?
A motion, so you're, you're making a motion to defer for two months?
Motion to defer for two months.
Okay, I have a motion to defer for two months from Tim. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mike. Further discussion? All those in favor of deferring this site plan for two months, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This item has been deferred. Next, we have Advanced Auto Parts, nineteen twenty-three and nineteen twenty-nine Ammable Road. Owner developer, J M B Investment Company.
This is the more or less same site plan you've seen previously, I believe it was last year when this came, a couple of months ago. Same building size at ten thousand one hundred and twelve square feet, two tenants, six thousand nine hundred and twelve square feet of that building would be set aside for retail. And the remaining square footage is earmarked for medical use. There would be a single access point off of Ammable Road. Currently, the lot is, of development is vacant and would need to be combined via a final plat. That needs to be recorded as well prior to issuance of any building permits. Vehicle use area for the site, point four six acres, and that does require two thousand twenty-five square feet of landscaping. Applicant has, is showing two thousand one hundred and fifty-eight square feet, so meeting our requirements. Park required of forty-four spaces, and they're showing for forty-five, and that does require two handicap spaces, which they are showing. The landscape plan shows maple trees along the road frontage of Ammable Road with shrubbery planted between the trees and the parking lot area. Additional landscaping is shown in landscape islands throughout the parking lot and surrounding the dumpster enclosure. The rear lot line does not show any landscaping due to this being the location of a sewer line, which would extend the entire length of the property. And due to no landscaping in this area, they are showing for a six foot opaque plastic privacy fence along that rear property line. Architectural elevations for all four elevations consist of primary materials, which would be brick and glass glazing, which do meet the designer view manualized presented. Standard comments one through five all to remain, we had a couple of staff comments. Staff comment one is more of a standard comment as, as it is two lots of record at this time, so that would need to be recorded prior to any issuance of any permits. Comment number two, they are showing rooftop mounted H vac units, we just want to ensure that the visibility from the main road would be, would be blanketed by the, any kind of parapet. So they did provide staff with a, a study, a vision study from the roadway and basically showed that those rooftop mounted H vac units would not be visible from the roads. We just want to make sure that would be the case, and they have done so. So staff is comfortable removing that comment. Comment number three has been addressed, and four is a utility comment that has been addressed as well. Number five was a fire department comment that has been addressed, can be removed. Comment number six was regarding landscaping along the road frontage. We did ask that they substitute the trees that they are showing, which are maple trees. So Mill Tennessee Electric does not allow maple trees of that species underneath their overhead utility line. So we did give them a option of substituting that with an ornamental tree, arborvitae, or a flame more maple. So once again, same as earlier, the flame maple is something that is consistent, we do allow as part of a maple variety of sorts at least. So staff would recommend a maple, the maple tree would be something that is planted in lieu of the sugar maples. Comment seven, the landscaping originally did not meet what we required for that ten percent of the vehicular use area, and that they have updated it and can all be removed. Comment eight is a standard comment being that Ammable is a T dot roadway, we will need T dot approval for a driveway permit prior to issuance of any building permits. Comments nine, ten, eleven are all C U D comments and will remain at this time. And then with that, staff recommend approval with those remaining comments.
Mitchell, define plastic, are we talking vinyl?
Yes.
Is it, are those synonymous, plastic and vinyl?
I mean, I think that's what, I don't know if they're synonymous or not, we always, usually, usually it's been about fence. I don't know what their plans actually, did their plans say plastic or did they buy? I believe it says it on the site plan page.
It says site, or it says, I'm sorry, plastic. Or does it say vinyl?
That's it. Opaque, opaque, plastic.
It says opaque plastic privacy fence, that's what it says. We probably ought to say vinyl, I think that's.
I feel more comfortable with that. I, I'm real comfortable it's not wood.
Yeah.
But I, I, I don't know, I have visions of thin plastic in my head right now, so if we could, I feel comfortable, I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, but changing that to vinyl.
We can just add a condition that the fence is required to be vinyl. Privacy fence along the rear is required to be vinyl.
Is that, that backs up to residential property, doesn't it?
It does, yes.
So would the fence be a better fit than landscaping?
We would prefer landscaping, but there's a sewer line, that's where the sewer is.
Okay.
And there's a sewer main, it's twenty foot town sewers, and we don't really want trees in that.
Right.
Other questions for Mitchell or staff on this? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve with staff comments, and they, I'll work vinyl instead of plastic.
Okay. I have a motion for staff comments, including changing tall plastic, six foot tall plastic privacy. Six-foot tall, plastic privacy fence to six-foot tall vinyl privacy fence. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This site plan is approved. We are now on to site plan number three, Seven Oaks Storage, eight-five-five and eight-five-nine, Seven Oaks Boulevard. Owner developer Slade Blackwell, Inc. Ana Development.
This is a proposed development for two climate-controlled self-storage facilities on Seven Oaks Boulevard on the vacant tract south of Seven Oaks Business Park Development. The property was rezoned in December last year to amend the previously approved PUD for office, warehouse, and self-storage mix to the proposed development of two self-storage facilities. Two building square footage for this... Total building square footage for this development would be ninety-seven thousand one hundred and seventy-six square feet. An ingress and egress point would be centrally located along Seven Oaks Boulevard with a single exit point on the southern end of the site. Vehicle use area for the site, one point two-two acres, and that does require five thousand three hundred and forty-four square feet of landscaping. Applicants showing for eight thousand four hundred and fifty square feet. Parking required of thirty-three spaces, and they're showing for thirty-seven, and that does require two handicap spaces, which they are showing. The landscape plan shows a mixture of street trees along Seven Oaks Boulevard with a variety of shrubbery planted between the trees along the parking lot. A variety of tree species are shown along the northern, southern, and western property line abutting I twenty-four. Additional shrubbery is shown along the base of the building in front and the dumpster enclosure areas. Architecture elevations show the front of both buildings to be clad with primary materials of brick of varying colors and glass and glazing. The southern side exterior wall face of each of the buildings has a primary material of brick with the rear approximately fifteen percent composed of metal. This is due to the way the buildings are shaped. They do kind of lean to a curvature of sorts. One side of the building is longer than the other side, so naturally, you're going to have a little bit of the rear being exposed from one of the sides. So that's where you get the fifteen percent. But your standard wall face would be entirely brick on those sides with just a little bit of the rear of the building being exposed. Staff doesn't believe it'd be visible from Seven Oaks Boulevard, just by twenty-four, but the entire rear of the building is metal anyways, so... Basically, it's going to all blend in, more or less. So as presented, though, these elevations are consistent with the approved PUD, though. Standard comments one through five all remain at this time. And then staff comment one regarding the fire flow, the standard comment. And then comment number two to submit water sewer construction plans, same comment. Comment three, we asked them to provide an ADA ramp on the sidewalk on the eastern side of the exit only, and they have done so. Comment four, the building is required to be sprinkled. Comment five, the F D C location has been addressed, can be removed. We also asked them to shift the fire hydrant location along a couple of spots throughout the development. They have done that, so comment number six can be removed. Comment seven, we asked them to make connection to the existing six-inch water main on the other side of the building. They have done so. And then comment number eight, for each of the buildings, we asked them to provide the percentage of materials used as far for the elevations, and they have done that. So comment number eight can be removed as well. We're left with staff comments one, two, and three, which... Or one, two, and four, sorry, which are all are naturally going to be standard comments, so there's nothing really left to address for the applicant. And with that, staff recommend approval.
This is consistent with what we previously put that in for, correct? I think we spent a great deal of counsel on this as well, so this is everything that we requested, right?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
Have a motion to approve the staff comments, so I have a second.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this site plan, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Site plan is approved. We are now on to the February bond review report.
Yeah, so let's go through this one relatively quickly. It's not... It's several, but not... Maybe not too many. Blakeney, Section One, Phase One, they have paved those streets in there fairly recently. They did ask for it to be released. I thought we can do release yet, we could do reduction. They do have some few things to clean up and finish there, so I did... We do... Are going to recommend reduction there. Keep twenty thousand, extend it one year as the maintenance bond. Tommy's Car Wash, this is just some internal paving that still needs to be done there. He's waiting till after the Genie Lane project gets finished, which is still in process. He did ask for a two-year extension. I'm only recommending one. The next one is Buckingham, Section One, Phase Two. This one is kind of the end of the maintenance period. They still had some items to clean up. Developers indicated he's trying to get everything finished there this week. And so we're... But we are at that end of the maintenance period. If he gets everything done, we can release it if he gets it done by the sixteenth of February. Otherwise, we would need an extension. Give him, I don't know, three more months on that one to get everything finished up. Woodcrest, Section Three is the same situation. Roads are paved and everything, but there's still... They got to finish up some cleanup items there. Again, end of the maintenance period there. February eighteenth is the deadline on that one. Cedar Hills, Section Two, Phase Two. That is... It is the end of the maintenance period. There's still a couple of items that they got to clean up there. If they get done, they can release that, otherwise, we wouldn't need any extension on that one till they get done. Rookers Bend. This is one that... I'm worried we're getting into the Creekstone or Creekside or wherever that one was. Territorialness one, just because it's becoming... It's been quite a while, and Mr. Johnson, I never hear back from him. I've tried to call him. I've tried to email him. I never hear back from him. So that is one that is... There's still several items to be finished there. And the roads are... Houses are all completely built, so we've... I'll make another attempt, but we're... I'm getting a little concerned on that one. We just recommended a three-month extension on that one as an escrow account, so it's not a bank we have to worry about on that. Buckingham Hills, similar to what the Woodcrest and Buckingham Place, same development there. They are trying to get everything finished and final tops. If he's able to do that by the twenty-third of February, we could reduce that one and extend it as the maintenance bond, but otherwise, just keep the same amount for three months. Amberton, Section Four, is one we have had a couple of years now. They are... Talked to a developer on that one. They're hoping to... The final topic has been scheduled for March. If they're able to get that done, we could reduce that and extend it as the maintenance bond at that time, but until that occurs, just keep that same amount. Ashagro Apartments, there's just some few cleanup items there. Their intention was... Is to have everything done by the end of February. If they're able to do that, we could... We could reduce it, or release it, rather, otherwise, to extend that one six months. Sundell Two, developers indicated they're looking to try to finish and pave that this summer. So that would be... This is March... Expiration would be in March, so if you give... Extend that six months to give him the summer, and maybe get that done this summer. And then Buckingham Place Three, again, similar situation there. If they're able to get that done by March... The paving done by March tenth, we can reduce it and extend it as one year as the maintenance bond. Otherwise, extend that one three months at the same amount. That's our report.
Okay, you heard the bond review report from Kevin. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion on the bond review report.
Move to approve the bond report.
I have a motion from Amy to approve the bond review report. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Charles. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the February bond review report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bond review report is approved. Staff comments?
I don't have anything.
Is that Captain Byers back there?
Yes, sir.
Anything tonight, sir?
No, sir.
All right. Todd?
No, sir.
All right. Catherine? Counselor?
Nothing from me.
Anything from the commission? Mike, did you say insurance agents generated a lot of garbage or trash, or did not?
I didn't say that.
You were probably right if you said they did. We stand adjourned.